Moved by Mr. Lawrence, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine, any questions? All in favor? Okay, six zero, Mr. Barrett is out.
We moved it as amended, right?
We need to suspend the rules, Mr. President.
Do we have an amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know we had, I don't see an amendment on here.
Three things.
Okay, there it is, right here, all right. Oh, there we go. Okay, I need a motion to suspend the rules.
I move.
Move by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine, any questions? Call for the question, all in favor? Okay, six zero. Mr. Barrett is out. I need a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
We need to read the additions.
You gotta read it into it, yes ma'am. I'm moving fast today.
You are, you are, go on.
Yeah.
You did just good.
Okay, all right, Michelle.
To the consent agenda, we are substituting resolution only to item 5Z, resolution authorizing an entry into an option to person, um, excuse me, option to purchase real property with Tullis Gardens Hotels LLC, a Mississippi limited liability company, for option to purchase real property to build a resort hotel and related issues and for other purposes. We are adding item CC, resolution authorizing expenditures to Christmas on the water in the total amount of $3,500. To the routine agenda, we are adding a supplemental routine docket of claims in the amount of $90,610.40.
All right, I need a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
I move that motion.
Movement, Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine, any questions? Call for the question, all in favor? Okay, seven zero, motion carry. President, uh, presentation agenda, mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, welcome everyone to our last meeting in, in, uh, November and hopefully everybody will have a, a great Thanksgiving, uh, break. So, uh, have some things on the agenda that I'd like to ask Gerald to come up to, in part of our mayor's report to introduce, uh, some folks with regard to, uh, uh, the item on the agenda. Wait, why not be on?
Thank you, Katie. Um, Gerald Blessie, uh, counsel for Tullis Gardens Hotel LLC. And, um, I want to introduce our team who are going to make the presentation. Uh, Robert Schwartz is, uh, counsel for all the business matters. And, um, Frank Genzer, of course, is, uh, the architectural team that has done these beautiful drawings. And they'll, they'll go through it with you in a moment. But I want to just take a minute to introduce Luke Lindsey and his wife Ashley, who are sitting right behind us here. Uh, Luke is, is the CEO of Tullis Gardens Hotel LLC. And he's also the manager of a, a family fund. Uh, it's an African-American, a wealthy African-American family that, uh, has a family fund that Luke is the manager of. And, uh, and they, of course, will be the source of capital for this beautiful project. Luke and Ashley came down a while back, quite some time ago, actually, and visiting. And they just loved it so much, they bought a house and moved their family here. So they're here to stay and make, put roots in the, in the community and, and, uh, really looking forward to this project and, and perhaps others, uh, as part of the community as time goes on. And so, uh, with, with that, I'm going to ask Robert and Frank if they will come forward and, and present to you and to the audience the master plan for Tullis Gardens Hotel.
Good afternoon. I'm Frank Genzer, uh, the architect, partner of Genzer WHLC Architecture that did the design of the project. I mean, I, we are really excited to participate in this project. I mean, the clients had given us very specific detail in terms of what they wanted to accomplish for their project and the city of Biloxi.
Excuse, excuse me, Mr. Genzer. Get a little closer to the mic or if you don't mind grabbing it for recording purposes.
All right. Double barrel, okay. But number one was remove no trees. Uh, number two was to reconstruct Tullis. And number three was to build a 200-room luxury resort hotel. With that, we took guidance, obviously, to try to rebuild and reconstruct the historic image of that part of the, of the city. Tullis, obviously, speaks for itself. The gardens that we created speak for themselves. And then we use the inspiration of the Buena Vista antivally with the architectural components, complete with what was called, or what was the deck on the top of the, um, Buena Vista, which will now be a 75-room, I mean, 75-seat, uh, restaurant. Uh, the building, obviously, is, um, has retail on the fourth floor, has, uh, um, not only retail, but, but a convention conference space, uh, has standard restaurants, uh, has, um, swimming pools. And, um, the 200 rooms virtually are going to be absolutely fantastic with their views. And there will be, uh, parking, not only in the parking garage and the valet parking, which is important to the, uh, to the owners, but there will be surface parking under the trees. And we'll use, uh, p- uh, pervious material so that the, uh, trees and the root structure will be, um, will be protected. So with this, I can just go through a couple, the images that we have. This, this is the image of the hotel as if we were on top of the new, um, pier that we are proposing. Okay, all right. Then the next, the next image, well, in this image, you can see to the left, uh, Tullis. That's all right, just, we can go one, we can go a couple of more. Okay, well, I need to talk slower then. There, th- this is sort of the centerpiece of the historic rebuilding, and that is Tullis. We have actually enhanced Tullis with, um, gardens, uh, water gardens, planters, as well as the fencing around it that's in keeping with, um, old Biloxi. Okay, can... Okay, th- this is another view. What we did do that wasn't on the site originally was we added a shoe fly. So, um, that is typical and, uh, typical Biloxi. And the Tullis Manor will be used as an event center. Downstairs will be able to be washed out, just like any other building. And, but it will be constructed to withstand hurricane damage. And you can see the, the brick walkways and all the gardens that have been placed. Also, around the existing kitchen, or where the, the kitchen was, will be, uh, kitchen, uh, will actually be used, the food. So I think it's sort of an exciting concept. Go next. We, we might just go next after each one, because it, uh, because it's, yeah. Right. That's right. Well... Right. We, we will have in the site plan, I'll point out that we do have a, uh, a walkway that actually goes into the, um, into the Orm Museum. And this is adjacent to the, this is a great view that shows the, the restaurant on the top floor. And, um, shows the proximity of the newly constructed Tullis to the new building, which is an 11-story building, in keeping with the other buildings. That's one more view of the, um, the proximity of Tullis to the hotel itself. This really shows a great view of the, of the Tullis, the shape of the hotel.
No, I want to see that.
Okay, no, I can do it.
It's not working for us for some reason.
The, um, you, you can, you can see the, the deck on the top. You can see also that we have saved all the trees. And we have placed the building within the, within the trees itself. And the, uh... The area in the very front, uh, on the east side is, um, both, uh, a walled-in area with swimming pool down below. Uh, we do have a portico share, lots of, um, water scaping in the property itself. Next. There, th- these are just additional views. Uh, this is from the existing, uh, pier that, pier that the, that the city has. And it's, um, shows again the, the, the massing of the building is, okay? One more, this, this is from the new pier that we're proposing, uh, to construct. And you can see the pedestrian crosswalk from the main hotel to the boardwalk, it's, or to the pier. All right. So, another eye-level view. We did some, um, artists trying to do a, what it would look like at night. I think it might, I think it's going forward. And you can see on the right-hand side, the enclosure for the swimming pools. Okay, this site plan, if you could go to the next site plan, we can go to the next site plan that blows it up. But this shows the location of the new pier we're proposing. But the next site plan should be a little larger, okay? And this, this to the, to the left is Tullis. To the right, obviously, in the lighter color is the hotel itself. In the, the far, uh, north side, or the top of the page, is the retail that will be on Howard Avenue. And then in between is, um, is surface parking and open landscaping. The, um, we, we do have space for, uh, outside pavilions or activities. And, um, you, you can see at the beginning, uh, at the, at the very main, uh, building, that we do have the Buena Vista look with a portico share there. So, um, we, we've tried our best to emulate what historic architecture was all about in, in Biloxi. So that's, that's basically the planet, planet itself. And, uh, it shows, you know, the, the shape of the buildings are, were dictated by the trees that we had, um, committed ourselves to save.
Okay, that was zero trees you're going to lose. So that, that's pretty amazing.
Any trees?
No trees. We'll have to go.
And I'm Robert Schwartz, uh, of course, with the development group. Happy to answer any questions that you have, uh, if there are any. We put together an option agreement that gives the purchaser the right. Excuse me, uh, we have appraisal process set up in that and also minimums for purchase price so that the city is protected. The city picks their appraisers. Um, we have a lot of, uh, requirements on the developer as things we have to do in the development process and our due diligence. And we are excited to get started on that proposal. So, uh, but again, I'm really here to answer more questions if there were any today. And since Frank has given you the overview of the project and its design.
You have any questions, Mr. Barrett?
Um, real, uh, real quick, um, just a couple of things. Thanks for being here today. Um, number one is, the only, I think it's a great, um, a great design and everything. The only concern I have is the crosswalk. Um, will there be any kind of, um, traffic lights or anything like that? Just with a 200-room, um, hotel, that's, that's more than is normally crossing at a crosswalk, um, on a regular basis. That's the only thing that causes me concern. And it's not something that we call support it. But just, um, you know, i- if there was any way we could go possibly through MDOT or anything and get a, 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 a bridge or s- uh, like we have at the Bow and at the, at Legends. Um, I think that that would be a, a great asset to the project.
We've had some internal discussions about that for, for the very reasons that you mentioned. Uh, those are things that we'll, of course, be able to look at during the due diligence process, because we'd have to contact MDOT. The city and MDOT would have to agree related to those type of... But obviously, to have a luxury hotel, you know, safety of the patrons is going to be a paramount concern. So that's something that we can certainly address along the way.
And the only other question I have is, um, as you know, we get a lot of these projects, um, and, and, and the renderings and everything that never come to fruition. Just where we're at right now, what do you think the, the, um, percentage of probability is that this will go forward and, and, and come to reality?
Well, we certainly think there's a high percentage of probability. This is not a, uh, venture where people have just given you a couple of drawings and said, believe we're going to do a project. Our clients have already expended over $150,000 in plans and designs without an agreement with the city. That's on their own dime in the hopes to be able to get here and to make sure that, at least initially, that it would work. We spent a great deal of time trying to design the project around the trees, because as we've mentioned before, one of the goals was not to take any of these trees out. That's a very difficult design for this hotel. It's going to drive the cost up, of course. But they're willing to try and do that, because they don't want to come and, and damage these trees.
Okay, yeah, that's all I have, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Glavine, please pull the mic a little closer so we can hear you. Mr. Glavine?
Uh, I just have a couple of comments. It, it's exciting to see us bringing some of the historic elements back to, into Biloxi. Uh, coincidentally, the original Buena Vista had 200 rooms. And this one, 10-story, did you say, or?
Eleven. Eleven in total, including, but it has parking, we have parking garage levels as well, so that...
Yeah, and, uh, you know, I think as we grow and, and, you know, I saw something today, another benchmark for Biloxi hitting. Uh, I think people rent a lot here. But thi- this certainly adds another hotel, a interesting hotel element to diversify our hospitality industry. Um, you know, the old marine room, I remember well at the Buena Vista. The hurricane room, of course, I remember well. I don't know if y'all are going to name anything like that. But, um, I'm excited about it. There, there's a question about, you know, what, how much the purchase price may or may not be. Not too hung up on that because of the significant investment a 200-room hotel brings along with the enhancement of the ground. And like you just mentioned, Mr. Genzer, bringing in the back part of the property to have access. Uh, is interesting, interesting, along with the, uh, green space that is available for meetings. In this industry, people are looking not for your typical box to have meetings. They're looking for an interesting venue. And this certainly, again, brings that element, uh, to our beautiful city. So, uh, hats off to the design team and, uh, your aspirations to do this. We hope to support you, bring it to, to reality. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Tissiel.
I have no questions or comments at this time, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Deming?
I really don't have much, um, to say about the project. I, I love it. If you look at the, the slide that's up on the screen right now and you go vertically and right a little bit, there's a small gray rectangle. Now forgive me for not knowing my Biloxi history, but it's... I wanted to know what that was. It's such a small little portion allocated to history.
That site that you're referring to is the original location of Tullis. Because of the, uh, again, designing around the trees, the open courtyard, the drive, we shifted the original location about 25 feet to the west. So the dark orange square is the newly constructed Tullis. The lighter color was the location of the original.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Ms. Newman?
Just wanted to say it's an absolutely stunning project, well done.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, a couple of questions on, uh, the drive-in. How come you didn't put a bay that, uh, you could drive in off the Highway 90 instead of turning directly into the business? Did you have enough room where you could put a turning bay? Drive it into, instead of driving right off the Highway 90? Because if you have events there, you're going to back everything up to Highway 90.
We're, we're, uh, entering off of a service drive that parallels Highway 90, uh, as, as a, and so, uh, you know, but...
It's not shown in his pictures.
We will definitely study that, uh, with, um, with the city and transportation when, when we submit it to DRC and have their comments. But, um, a, a turning drive...
I was going to say, according to the pictures... According to the pictures, it looked like you come and...
Yeah, it's not shown in the, the service drive is not shown in this rendering. And, and it should be. But that's, the main entrance would be off of that service drive between Oak Street and, and Coon.
Right.
Okay, it did look like that on here. That's why I was just trying to make sure. They want to turn off. You know, they have the service drive, they should be wide enough to do that. Because you have events that'll be backing up and stuff like that. So you don't want that on Highway 90.
Okay, well, well, again, this will be on the service drive, not on Highway 90.
Right.
And, uh, I think that maybe the site plan before showed, uh, you, Highway 90, when it showed the, um, when it showed the pier going across the street. Uh, it showed both the Highway 90, a median, and then the service drive.
Yeah, you see the service drive there. All right. We'll be happy to address that.
So we will definitely look at that.
Yeah. You know, because that's the, and the, the repair rights is strictly the 100 feet where we're going to put the, the pier. The repair rights on this, uh, contract is strictly 100-foot wide?
That's correct, it's 100-foot wide. That's correct. The city owns a larger parcel, the city will be retaining the balance of it. They'll be conveying to us enough so that we can construct the pier if depicted, uh, so that they will have a pier that can be used for its patrons.
Do we own any other property on the side of, on the east side of the 100 feet? The city, do we have any rights or anything else? I know that the Schuene complex...
Yeah, between...
That's, that's separated from that.
To the, to the east of the boundary is, uh, the Grand Casino owns that.
Okay, so, but yes, the 100 feet as far as we can go over?
Yes.
Okay, wanted to make sure we had that straight. And then, uh, the ship on top in 1959 went to my senior prime in the one of the Buena Vista. A lot of y'all wasn't born back then, but that's, uh, that's where I had the senior prime, on top of the deck. Brenda Lee came in and saying, "Well, you know how a shoe fly was created?"
Yeah, no.
It had to be eight feet above the ground, because the flies don't fly eight feet above the ground. And that's where the shoe fly come in at the height. Okay, y'all like to know that.
It's a little piece of information. All right. But I think Frank has, uh, has seen this concept of the deck before, as far as that's what we usually call it, is the deck. And it is an amazing, uh, feature in, in some of the historical shots.
And back in 1920s is when they built all the hotels and everything along the coast.
Yep.
All of them, that's when it was in the 20s. I, I wasn't here.
Yeah, I remember that. Were you two years old then? I don't know, were you two years? Uh, no. In my mayor's report, I forgot to do something. But I think, Luke, you kind of, uh, back me up there. But I think, you know, on the 29th, we're going to have a ribbon cutting of that, uh, uh, boardwalk, uh, walkway. I think DMR, that's going to be at 11 o'clock.
November 29.
And I think i- in doing what, uh, in, in researching that boardwalk and, and of course, the restoration of the, of the sand, it, it played a big part in, in, I guess, the excitement of this project. So, uh, uh, we're, you know, we're excited about, and the people are walking it and bicycling it and doing all kinds of things right now. So, uh, that's a, a huge part, I think, of the strategy that will attract things, you know, east and west and to the north. So we thank you.
Is that going to be November the 29th?
Yes.
November, right?
Tuesday, yeah. Tuesday the 29th, 11 o'clock at Oak Street.
All right.
Okay, and I'll make, make my last observations. I'm really excited about the project. I'm excited that you guys, that no trees will be lost. That is great. And it's, it's exciting to know that we're getting ready to get really, really close to our pre-Catrina numbers as far as hotel, uh, space. You know, we, we've been fighting to try to get that, bring in a good hotel space and, and have things up and above board once again. So thank you guys for everything you do.
Mr. President, I did forget to add a little bit, you know, more comments on the thing. I think we're in the $40,000, $40,000 square foot range for convention spots, is that right? It, around there?
Space.
Yeah, convention space in the property.
Eighty thousand square feet.
Eighty thousand square feet? Well, that's significant, too. Again, this is a non-casino, non-gaming site that will, uh, have a, an attraction to, uh, those folks that, uh, can't, uh, you know, stay in government specifically. So, uh, that's another way to add it on, that, uh, we'll be getting business to East Biloxi. We studied a couple of, uh, times, uh, the, the possibility. It's the same option that we, you know, we did earlier. So I think, uh, those, that, that data will be confirmed. And, uh, it'll, you know, nothing but good things, I think, here. Thank, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Genzer, we appreciate you guys coming up, delivering that.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Okay, anything else, Mayor?
No, that's it, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, next on the, uh, presentation agenda, we're going to go with the council report. I'm going to start to my right, Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, just a couple of things. We finally started the, the Boyett drainage ditch that's been collapsed on that project. So, um, thanks for making that happen. Secondly, our Woolmarket Christmas Parade is December 10th at 2 o'clock. So anyone that's planning to ride on that, the Corvette Club is, um, providing vehicles for the council and the administration on that. So I need a head count on who's going to, you know, be a part of that. And that's all I have today, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, congratulations to the, uh, mayor, I know he, uh, kind of left the, oh, there he is. Uh, congratulations to the mayor for the mayor's cup and, uh, at Centennial Plaza. Uh, amazingly, with the, with the inclement weather. Uh, y'all had such a good crowd over there. Uh, I recognized a couple of the, uh, gumbo attendants. So y'all had an unfair advantage, uh, with the, with the personnel distributing the gumbo. For those of you who don't know what happened, it was, uh, Gumbo Fest in, uh, in Guffport at Centennial Plaza. And the mayor had a Biloxi entourage there divvying up, uh, I don't know how many gallons you had, you must have 50 gallons out there. But, uh, they had several tents and, uh, I heard nothing but good things about it. And Biloxi was represented very well, Mayor. The other thing, uh, I'd like to alert the director, community, uh, development. I still have some angst over what's happening over, uh, Hickman, the Hickman property. There's old boats and... There's old boats and vehicles. There's a lot of clearing going on. It seems to me that would require permits. Doesn't seem like, they may be operating within the guidelines, but there is a tremendous a lot, amount of dirt that's being moved. The property is being cleaned up, which I'm glad to see. There's been some activity with some of the dumpsters with what appeared to be salvage a couple of times. And again, I'm concerned about the, the old boats and vehicles that are up toward the front of the property that remain there. In addition to that, just to the, down the road from Hickman, there's another laydown yard, illegal laydown yard. We had, I guess, passed a measure to allow them to put up a building to collect debris or salvage or whatever it is. That building never was built, and they're laying it on the ground. To my understanding, a cease and desist order, I think, was issued. It seems like there's more activity over the last three weeks than there was three weeks ago. Notwithstanding, a new warrant was issued for the arrest of one of the owners, which I understand was executed. It just concerns me that it seems like despite all that, that that activity remains active and spirited and like they, like nothing has ever happened. So can you comment on that, Director?
Yes, sir. It's scheduled to go to court on December the 7th. We received notice this week. You know, we had written him a citation. The police department delivered that citation, and the court date is December the 7th.
And that's fine and dandy, but what prevents activity that continues to, it appears to me, and, and even when we met with one of the relatives at Hickman, he said, "My brother has all the licenses to do what he's doing. You can't prevent him to do that." We told him that was not true, and it was just a conversation, but it is evidence that he is continuing to ignore whatever cease and desist or whatever licenses he does have or doesn't have.
Okay. I'm in talks with Terry Steele about that. She's the attorney that handled that for us, and I'll be able to get you an answer for that very shortly.
Thank you, Director. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Glavine. Dr. Tizell?
A couple of things. I'd mentioned this a couple of times before. Eastler has a solar array over their parking area, I think, out at the, maybe the commissary or out around there somewhere. And so it keeps their cars cool, or their patrons' cars cool, and they're able to generate some savings with that. It would be great if we might look at some small demonstration project on a city facility. The first one that comes to mind is the Port Building, maybe, but also, I know there are other factors involved, but I'm thinking there's grant money coming down the pipe. We should look at doing something like that. And maybe the money that we save might be used for putting some of these residential utility lines underground. It's just a thought. A stray electron is a family member might say, but it's just food for thought. I'll give you something later this week, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Leonard on that. The second thing is, I know we have some railroad closures. We're fixing to re-engineer Main Street. It's easier, apparently, to re-engineer the crossing than it is to teach truck drivers to read. And having, having said that, I know that we have several others to close. I don't know when we'll be moving forward on that. I think we've already closed Dorries.
Nixon.
And Dorries and Nixon, thank you. But I know at some point, we're going to be looking, looking.
I think we're at about six altogether in just a sequence. I think, you know, Deloney and maybe Irquaz is next up on the, on the list. And then, of course, with the extension of Bob's Ferry, that will.
Right, we, that's, that's, that was the driving force in looking at, at those closures. Other than wishing everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving, that concludes my comments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Tizell. Mr. Deming?
I don't have much. Just, oh my gosh. Ms. Christie, can we get together? Are you available at the beginning of this year? I know you're back to the city and probably running around a lot, getting caught up with that department, but I'm going to send you an email if we could schedule a time to, to get to the Club Moss Circle area and look at some of the problems that need to be corrected, and if you could maybe help point out some solutions. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Newman?
Yes. I would like to request the administration to have the Community Development Department conduct a public hearing before the Planning Commission to consider a tax amendment that would allow a cannabis processing facility to be located in NB Neighborhood Business Zone districts. Jerry Creel, would you clarify what we're going to be doing?
Currently, cannabis processing facilities are not allowed in NB. And, you know, this has been a learning experience for all of us. We didn't understand the scope of what was involved in a processing facility. We thought it would be a large facility, when in effect, it's about the size of a kitchen. Essentially, what they do is, is process the cannabis to make gummies and things like that out of it. The, the state law does not allow the processing facility to be in the same tenant space as a cannabis dispensary. They can be in the same building, but they have to be separated by a wall that has no doors, no connections between the two. We've had some, some cannabis representatives that have come to the Planning Commission and asked that the Planning Commission and the council consider allowing processing facilities in NB zoning, which means that some of the areas along Pass Road, which are zoned NB, that it would be allowed, provided they met the other requirements of the state law. So if you agree to this, then what we'll do is we'll write up the case and have a public hearing before the Planning Commission and then bring it back to the city council.
Okay, next, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, Paul was talking about Thanksgiving Sunday. They had a special need Thanksgiving. The mayor was there, and they presented about 200 people. It was pretty nice, and they enjoyed it. It's a big turkey day for them. So it turned out great at the Donald Snyder Center. That was, that was pretty great people. Had, had a ball, enjoyed it. They're happy as can be. So that turned out to be a great day. The second thing, Ground Zero had their Blue Festival. Little rain this time, but they definitely need to keep that going because that will be a big event if they have, you know, I know they moved inside and they sold all the seats inside, so the crowd was still there. But, you know, whether they need downtown or the street, I'm really not sure if that really serves any good purpose for them. If they could have it inside the club, I think it'd be a good thing. They've got to keep it going, though. I don't know who they taught to you or not, bofo, but make sure they do it again next year. And then the last thing we did, had a ribbon cutting for Batte's, and they moved down on the side, all jacked up. And it's a great, that's McKeston Hall family, the Crapos. They've been in that business for 75 years. And I think the location they moved to is going to really do well for them and Howard Avenue. So that's a good thing for us in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. And I have just a few little comments. Just want to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving. And I also want to piggyback on Mr. Barrett. They're having a Thanksgiving parade on Saturday, and then on Sunday. And more too, we're having our annual Christmas parade with Santa Claus, and we're going to try to give away like we did last year to make sure all kids get a present. We have local businesses who donated almost 500 toys for all kids in the area. So just wanted to make that part of my report. And that concludes report on the council's report. We're going to move on to the public agenda. The public agenda lasts a total of 45 minutes, three minutes per person. And I'm going to start with my left. All the, anyone on my left who would like to come up and make a comment, please come
Thank y'all. Bones Bark, I've been wanting to come up and talk for a while now, but I think right now is the perfect time. When we voted for medical marijuana, I didn't know the tourist was in the bill. And when it got voted down on Highway 90, it just baffles me that, that the casino didn't want it to open. And if you go to Las Vegas, it's the number one place for marijuana in the country. It's also the number one tourism for, in the country. And I'm going to bet you $1,000 to a penny that you can go out there right now and ask anyone, "Will you come to Biloxi because they, will you stay away from Biloxi because they have medical marijuana?" And I'm going to bet you they say no. And where is the tourism on the coast? It's from Bay St. Louis to Moss Point. Now, we got a, a piece of property downtown on Water Street that's been vacant since Camille hit. And what else is going to go up there in that small piece of property? And I don't know how many of you have been sick when you've taken opioids and couldn't get off of them? I have. And you know what medical marijuana does? It gets you off that crap, and it gets you on the right stuff. And, you know, it's, 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 it's not the, whatever they've been saying that gets you on other drugs. This is not a place where you can come in off the street and buy marijuana and stand out there and smoke it. You got to have a card. You got to have it from the pharmacy. And what better place was it to put on Highway 90 where there's already a pharmacy right behind it? So, I mean, it just baffles me that here I am having medical problems, and I got to fight the city and the tourism to go get my prescription filled. Now, I'm not saying that you're going to vote them all down on every location. I respect your opinion on this, but I don't respect it because of who really opposed it and what's the problem with it? It's legal. You know that 82% of the people in Harrison County voted for it? 82%. And so I know you got different locations, but what's wrong with a pharmacy with medical marijuana? What's wrong with it? It's legal. I mean, it's, it's, it helps people. I mean, it, it just baffles me that you, you got to, I can't go get my prescription filled in a certain spot. So I'm asking y'all to approve this location, and beside that, I've been smoking for 53 years, and look how normal I am.
Mr. Barks, did you sign in? Mr. Barks? Did you sign in?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
And you told me you didn't inhale, Barks.
I, I don't know how to follow that, but anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my left? Yes, ma'am.
That's the new normal.
That's the, Mr. Bones.
Well, good afternoon. I'm glad to be here today, and I came to talk about the Elliot Homes Townhouses, 40, that are going by Iverville. And it's going on community business zone property, which we are very happy about. We are not here to complain. I am representing the wonderful White House, the Iverville, all the way to Iverville group. Of course, they're a little busy today. They're trying to get ready for Thanksgiving. So I told them I would come up here and tell you that we are for that, even though that is short-term rental. But we are happy that these short-term rentals are going on business property and not in the neighborhoods. So we just wanted to let you know that we are being very diligent about anything that comes up short-term rental, and that we are getting stronger because of that, because of you and because of Mr. Creel here. But we do want you to know that we are happy and we are not against it, but we are watching everything that comes up short-term rentals in our neighborhood. There are other neighborhoods that are also, but we are only worried about our own neighborhood. I'm also very happy about Mr. Ginzer's project. I'm an old-time Biloxi, and I think it's great, too, that we're finally getting some of these places back. But thanks, thanks to you all for being here and for representing Biloxi, and hope you all have a nice Thanksgiving.
Was it Martha?
Thank you, Ms. Martha.
Trip say I was happy?
That's why I'm happy.
Thank you, Martha.
That's why I wanted you to know. We are here today to let you know we're happy. Just so you keep it out of the net.
Let the record show.
All right, a pat on the back before Thanksgiving. Anyone else on my left? Yes, Ms. Wilson? Ms. Kilicwusson?
Hello, everyone. I am Jaclyn Wilson, and I'm the owner of Biloxi Beach Resort Rentals.
Don't forget to sign in.
Oh, yeah, I'll sign in. So I am here today because I'm concerned about the number of short-term rentals that are being approved in the city. Yes, I know, I do this for a living, but everything is good in moderation. And I've spoken to several of you, I think my husband has also spoken to several of y'all regarding this. And I feel like the city needs to do their homework, think about this a little. I think a cap is needed. I think, I know that our market is oversaturated right now. I can feel it, as well as other companies who do this. And we don't have enough customers right now for the inventory that we have. So several things are going to happen. You're going to have people who are buying these properties, they can't rent them for the top dollar that they want to, and they're going to go into foreclosure. Or they're going to put less than nice tenants in there just to make the money to pay the note. I think the city really needs to think about this, where we're putting these rentals, why are we approving it? Is it because of money? Not all money is good money. Also, I, Mr. Jerry, I have some stuff for you. I think the city needs to update their application because right now, I know for a fact, there are multiple people who are operating in the city of Biloxi who have hosts that are against the Mississippi Real Estate Commission law. They are acting as a broker, and they are not brokers. So this is something that I feel the city needs to monitor. There are ways to do that. I'll be happy to come to your office and discuss that with you. I also made copies of this for anyone that would like to see it. It's just a little copy of the Real Estate Commission book where it says what acting as a broker is and how a short-term rental is supposed to be licensed. My company has a broker, therefore, we can act in this way. A property owner can manage their own property because they are the sole owners, but if I had Mr. Felix hosting one of my properties, he is not affiliated with the broker, he is not a broker, he is not my family, it's against the law because they're taking money as either a commission or a flat rate to do this for the people who own the property. Also, I think the city needs to have it on their application and make it a rule that when they're advertising their properties, you need to advertise your license number for the city of Biloxi. So that way, the one person in the department who is having to oversee 400 licensed short-term rentals, it'll make it easier for him to scroll through these sites to see, okay, well, this property on Porter Avenue is licensed, here is their license number, and they are current. So I have great ideas. I look forward to speaking with you, Jerry. If any of y'all want a copy of this, I'll be happy to hand it to y'all. Just let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Kilicwusson. Anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my left? Come on. And don't forget to sign in, please.
Do you got an extra? Jerry, Jerry, give me an extra.
Peter, Peter, tell her I want to. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stephen Doomer. I'm an attorney here in Biloxi. I own several buildings down here, and I wanted to speak specifically to Resolution Section A, which is the medical cannabis dispensary requested at 771 Water Street. So contrary to the first speaker, not everyone who's opposed to a particular location is opposed to the concept or the need for medical marijuana. But there is a time and there is a place where certain things work better, just like many of us would not want a truck stopped in the middle of our neighborhood, or we don't want a construction mill next to our house. There are times and places. And the particular spot where Section A on the resolution is requested is in currently what's Zone DT. You have to ask yourself, ladies and gentlemen, whether or not a medical marijuana dispensary, which will all in likelihood become a full-time dispensary for all use, fosters a vibrant, walkable which will all in likelihood become a full-time dispensary for all use, fosters a vibrant, walkable, mixed-use, economically sustainable development that is at Biloxi's traditional core. You all have to ask yourself.
I think we lost them.
You have to ask yourself whether or not any of this is the downtown character. And the reality is, ladies and gentlemen, I respectfully believe that this should be better suited for a community business district or a limited business district.
Because I agree, we need to be able to make this accessible to the public, but that does not mean it fits the character. It's right next to Rue Magnolia, it's right on a one-way street, it simply doesn't fit the character we're trying to develop. You've seen letters that are in your packet, myself, my wife's business, Joe Gazza, his family, we are not opposed to the concept of a dispensary, we're opposed to where the community wants. Joe and I are currently working on what will effectively be a $20 million building and it's right down the street and that just doesn't fit the character that I think you all want for Biloxi. We can accomplish the same goal by putting it slightly several blocks away. There were, we can still help the people that need it, but it doesn't drive the types of issues that if you look at national statistics, when you put a dispensary, I'm sure there's a million statistics can say a million different things, but the one I found is from the Academy of Criminal Justice Sciences in the Justice Quarterly. And it said that when you put in a medical dispensary, either recreational or medical only, you have increases of crime between 26 to 1,442%. And it's not because of the people using the drugs, it's the people that prey on those people that are then getting marijuana or come with large amounts of cash. It is not the same as a pharmacy because you don't know what that person is getting. But if you know that every single person that comes out of a dispensary has a drug and you're a criminal, where are you gonna go? It is a target-rich environment because the people going in have cash and the people coming out have something you want. And so, you can put a lot of law enforcement around it, it doesn't fit for the character where it's currently being requested. And I ask you, ladies and gentlemen, to consider that and accept the Planning Commission's denial and request it to be relocated to a different area in Biloxi. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my left? Please don't forget to sign in.
My name is Donovan Scruggs, 307 Pine Drive in Ocean Springs. And I'm also here to speak on item 4A of the agenda. If you recall, we did come before you previously with a location that was more in the public view. It was the corner of Calvet and Highway 90. And of course, that was not considered to be a good site because of proximity. The new location is a little further removed on Water Street. It's definitely off the beaten path. As Mr. Dummer just said, it's on a one-way street and it's definitely not something that can be seen from Highway 90 very easily. And as Mr. Barks said earlier as well, it's a site that has not been redeveloped or touched for several years. This particular site on Water has been vacant since the house was removed after Hurricane Katrina. The idea is to put a house on, I mean, a building on that site that will act as a dispensary. We've done some, a good bit of work on this site and in fact, have gone through your DRC as well as your Architectural and Historical Design Review Board. Both those bodies have signed off on it. We have put a building on the site, we've proposed a building for the site that is going to be an asset to the community. Now, the state, when they approved cannabis, they basically took the ideas from the other states that have done so. They've copied the ideas that have worked in other locations. And the regulations that are associated with a cannabis dispensary in Mississippi is extremely rigid. The amount of security measures, the filming, the audio, the entire security atmosphere of a dispensary is to make certain that nothing goes on that should not be occurring there. Every access point, the parking lots, the actual inside the dispensary itself will be monitored. And keep in mind, a dispensary is going to serve basically as a dispensing counter that you would see in a pharmacy. It is not located with a lot of retail goods or anything else, it's strictly the medical cannabis that is provided there. So, it's going to be a very low-traffic environment and if you are in there, you are in there for a specific reason. You've been carded, you are allowed to be in there, and it is not for recreational purposes. So, I don't see the concern that is being raised today, you know, by a neighbor in that the, we think it will be an asset. We think it will be, it will provide a service to many of the residents of Biloxi who need this product. And I think it will help others who are in the general vicinity of the location. I do ask that you overturn the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny this and approve this location for a dispensary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else on my left?
Hi, my name is Rebecca Powers and I am here representing my sister and myself. We own Mississippi Green Spa. We started it two years ago. We are very large, very big advocates for medical medicinal marijuana. We saw what it did for my father as he died of excruciating bone cancer. Mr. Dummer mentioned the drugs coming out of the stores, that dispensary that would make them prey. Do we sit outside of Walgreens to wait for the opioids coming out by record numbers? And then I asked the question, if there were to be a $2 million beautiful little tiny boutique Walgreens in this little location, would that be offensive? No, because that's what we've all been conditioned to, right? That it's okay. Someone mentioned, I think Bones, and I appreciate that, so that you need a medical medicinal card to even enter from a pharmacy. It's actually from a medical doctor. So, just as you would go to a medical doctor and get a prescription from a Walgreens or anywhere else, it would be the very same thing. I will also say that the three letter, the four letters that the Planning Commission was presented and that led to that denial, three of them were from Mr. Dummer himself, his, you know, his law firm, his wife's little building, his own home address, and Mr. Buddy, Mr. Gillis, excuse me, that owns the Buddies. Well, also, you know, and people call me and give me information constantly when things happen, and one of the first things was Buddies was getting ready to, you know, had a lease agreement with a dispensary. So, there's these personal intentions in my view and from Mr. Dummer having his own personal interest in doing something very similar. I wasn't going to speak today, I didn't think I needed to, I didn't know that the opposition, that he would be here. And I do have two of my dearest friends sitting with me, Ms. Ruthie Doucet. She and her son, John Harrison, wanted to be here today to support us because cannabis has changed his life. You know, I'm sure you heard about John Harrison, he was in a horrible electrocution accident when his sailboat mast hit a Mississippi power line. And this young man, instead of being in bed writhing in pain, he is taking special needs children out on boat rides, including my son and including my friend Adrian, whose son is sitting with him, he has cerebral palsy and he can still walk today because of hip, he's had a hip surgery, but that is excruciating and he still has a smile on his face. So, I am here to tell you that opioids, as Bones mentioned, are debilitating, rob your soul, and that cannabis is being used to get people off of opioids. Cannabis is being used to give children a good quality of life. And by saying this is not the right location, it makes you say, what is negative about it? Is there still this, you know, curse that we've brought up to think it's naughty? It was all economic and it's been 72 years of misinformation. And so, I am proud to say that we want people to be informed and I'm very proud of the economic impact that we have. And to answer your question, Councilman Lawrence, Biloxi Blues, Living Biloxi Blues Festival was amazing. It was at Ground Zero, we did get rained out, but Mississippi Green Spa was one of the largest sponsors, our name is up on the banner with the Blues Club. And we are definitely coming back next year bigger and better. We did okay just being inside. We weren't selling anything, we were just there to be a sponsor. But all the food trucks and stuff, they all came in and we had a fantastic time. And there's a 17-year-old little kid from Van Cleve named Six String Andrew, and I think he's gonna be a very big star, so I want to put that on the record as well. So, my friend Biloxi, excuse me, my friend Ruthie Doucet drove all the way to Biloxi after attending her funeral, and she may want to say something or anyone else, but if you have any questions, I am certainly here and I certainly love the Mississippi Gulf Coast and I'm never leaving. We're only asking for conditional use, so if there's anything we do that you don't like, you can definitely pull that conditional use. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Is there anyone else on my left before I move to my right? Okay, is there anyone on my right that would like to come up and speak? All right, my neighbor.
Yes, my name's Dennis Kenny. I recently bought a house here in Biloxi two years ago. I don't know when I can call myself a resident, sometimes you have to be fourth or fifth generation for these cities. But I want to talk to you today about this construction project, reconstruction and projects that you've got going on here in Biloxi, to tell you, I think that's an amazing undertaking for anybody. And to take on this big a job and the planning and development that it must have taken, utility coordination and everything else, that's what I did for a living for 40 years. So, as I look at this project, it's amazing that these people, you must get a floodgate of complaints over and over with this going on in a residential neighborhood. So, I drive through the neighborhood that I live in, it's, some of it's done and the parts that aren't done. And the thing that I notice is that this should be proud in this community for what you people have done. And I know a lot of you people had sleepless nights and you probably had some of your residents calling you up telling you, because they're all sidewalk superintendents. But the one thing I noticed in this whole project is there doesn't seem to be that. As I look at these beautiful sidewalks that are built for safety for our residents, they're parking lots, people are parked all over these things. And it's, I've served 32 communities when I worked for General Water Works. You don't see that anywhere. Of course, I'm from the Northeast, which is overregulated anyway. So, I asked my wife as I'm driving through the neighborhood, because I really do like to look at this project, maybe Mississippi, you can park on the sidewalks. I don't understand this. She pulls out a little handheld computer and, no, she says, here's the statute, only took her 30 seconds to find it. And of course, you can't park on the sidewalk, that's common sense. So, what's happened here is somehow our neighborhood, or maybe all the neighborhoods, are getting a little complacent on that. We should be self-regulating ourselves as a community and not need this giant enforcement and the police department don't need to be parking attendants. So, does the council have a highway committee or a road committee that you serve, some of you serve on?
Traffic committee.
A traffic committee. I would like to see if maybe there's a way that the traffic committee could address this particular item and find out if there's something wrong with the ordinance that makes it impossible to get the community to understand the state regulations that don't do this for your own safety. My wife is much more concerned about the safety aspect. I'm more concerned about the pride in the project and how well it looks and the fact that people are using it for their own use instead of the public use it's intended for. So, that's my main request is you can look, and by the way, whoever came up with this monthly report, this is genius. You know, I work with communities and they'll send out one mailing to the customers that are only affected there, but the citizens of this town get a monthly report of where that project's going. That is something you should all be proud of. But if, the other thing is, maybe once the committee finds out exactly what the regulations, how you enforce them, if they need to be changed so it's not burdened on the police department, whatever it takes, but then put a little thing in here that says, by the way, in case you live in a vacuum, you can't park on a sidewalk. And maybe that'll help the whole community. I appreciate your time. Looking at this agenda, I'm taking up way too much.
Okay, thank you. Could you please sign in for me? And we appreciate your comments and I will be following up with you along with the chief to get that information back to you. Is there anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my right? Thank you, sir.
My name is Gerald Hopkins. I'm the architect for a project that's gonna be developed on First Street and Cedar and on the corner. And it's, we're here with the resolution to, for conditional use to do a duplex in an NB zone and also a conditional use for a, for it to be a short-term rentals and entertain any questions you might have at this time.
Okay, so this is not a question announcing session, just, you know, comments and feedback to the council.
Okay. Well, they can do it when they bring it up.
Oh, okay. Well, okay. Yeah, but when we get to that section, if there's any questions from the council, they'll open it up to you. Thank you, George. Is there anyone else on my right?
Do we have enough time for her? Do we have enough time for Kim?
No.
We're gonna give her a whole three minutes.
You may not have time. Good afternoon, everybody. It's been a while since I've seen y'all. Good to see you and happy to be here. I'm here for a couple of reasons today. Number one, the curiosity about the Tullis project. I live at 129 Holly Street, so I will actually have a view of that project because there's nothing between me but the ORE and that and Biloxi Yacht Club. I welcome that project. I love the idea that the Tullis Manor will be recreated, special place in my heart. Our grandmother's property is directly behind Tullis. I do think that the developers, I hope, will work closely with everybody to make sure that we protect everybody around there. And one thing in particular that I'm speaking to is the fact that I'm on the Board of Directors of the Maritime Museum. Our beautiful pier is right out there, but I have no qualms that if you want to make something work, you can make something work. And to quote George Bernard Shaw, I'll say with, progress comes with, progress is impossible without change and people who could not change their minds can accomplish nothing. So, I think we have to be open and open-minded to working with these folks and seeing a great development back on the point again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my right? Is there anyone in the back?
I have one little comment. This is the worst speaker system in the world. Y'all need to find money, you cannot hear anything in the back of this room. Uh, one more time.
Okay, with that being said, we're gonna close our public agenda. We're gonna move right along into our policy agenda. We're gonna start off with Resolution A. Michelle?
Resolution to deny a request for conditional use to authorize the construction of a new medical cannabis dispensary located at 771 Water Street, Mississippi Green Spa LLC.
I moved up, Plan Commission recommendation to deny.
We got a motion by Mr. Lawrence to, the motion by Mr. Lawrence?
Was that motion to deny the denial?
To deny the deny?
No.
Or to overturn it?
To deny the request for conditional use.
Okay.
That was the Plan Commission's recommendation.
Oh, so you're gonna deny their recommendation?
No. Resolution to deny. Y'all reading something.
So, you're okay? Oh, so you're okay with the denial?
Right.
Okay. We have a motion, a motion on Resolution A. I need a second. I need a second. There's no second? The motion dies.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to deny the denial. In essence, in essence, to approve the conditional use at this location.
Okay, we got a motion to approve, overturn, we have a motion to overturn by Dr. Tisdale. Need a second? Second by Ms. Newman. Discussion, Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, just a couple of observations. The location is in a downtown, I think, is it in downtown or it's in a downtown zone, Jerry, or waterfront? It's downtown, correct?
It's downtown.
It's downtown. If this were located in a neighborhood business zone, a community business zone or regional business zone, this is permitted by right.
That's correct.
Wouldn't be here discussing this today with the council, but because it's in the downtown zone and that area, and it's quite a large area, that downtown zone, it runs from the railroad tracks to Highway 90 and east and west, I can't recall, but it's a number of square blocks. It's essentially the business district. Would that be appropriate? So, anywhere in that area... So, uh, anywhere in that area, any proposed cannabis dispensary would be before the council requesting a conditional use.
That's great.
Um, I wanted to clear that up. The, uh, it's not on the Main thoroughfare. It's not on Highway ninety, which concerned, which concerned me on a previous issue before the council. It's not on Howard Avenue. It's on Water Street. And, um, I, I, it's, it's in an area, as was noted earlier, that hadn't been developed since Katrina. In fact, I, I don't think there's anything on the south side of Water Street on that block except the half shell oyster house and parking and more empty parcels.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Between there and Highway ninety. And the, the regs and concerned with security and safety in the area. Uh, just as I understand it, if I'm going to that location, I have a, a card from my physician. I can't enter it, that location, and, and the, the dispensary is the only thing that can be located in that structure.
That's correct.
There are security features inside. And just like, uh, anybody else, if there was a, a problem with, um, questionable people and their motives for being in a certain part of town, one is, one can always call the police department. In fact, the police chief encourages that you call him and let him know, uh, we'd rather be safe than sorry. Um, that being said, I'm in, I'm in favor of this location. I have, uh, my concerns have been allayed. I know in Ward Five, there are currently two, uh, dispensaries that, uh, didn't come before this council because they're in an appropriate zone for dispensaries. And they're not within, I think it's a thousand feet of a church or is it fifteen hundred feet?
No, it's a thousand feet of a church, school or daycare.
Exactly. Um, so this meets the criteria. The only reason, uh, it's before us today uh, for a conditional use approval is because it's in a downtown zone.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. That concludes my comments.
Okay, I want, I want to kind of, uh, just make a look claff, for clarity. Um, A was to approve, approve the deny. B was to ask for a public hearing and C was to approve it. So essentially, you had a motion to approve, uh,
C.
Approve C.
That's, that's correct. Nobody asked for a public hearing. Mr. Lawrence asked to approve the resolution is, is presented, which was for denial. It died for lack of a second.
Absolutely.
So I move to, um, overturn it or, or if you will, approve it, which you all aren't looking at this, but it's option C.
Option C. Okay, and we have a second by Ms. Newman.
That's correct.
Still good with your C? Okay, and now we're back to discussion.
I'm, I've concluded my comments. Thank you.
Great. Uh, Ms. Newman? No comment. Okay, Mr. Glavin?
Only thing I want to add, it was, uh, noted in, uh, public comments is this is conditional use, so if for any reason this does not fit or does not work out or, or poses some problems, the council can or the Planning Commission can remove the conditional use.
That's correct.
I want to make that very clear because that's important. This is new territory. Uh, the first one that came before this council, uh, was at a location that we deemed not compatible. I think the Planning Commission, uh, they actually approved that one. We denied it. This one, the Planning Commission denied probably because they thought it was, uh, maybe still in that general area of, of the stadium, um, which we have discussed that it isn't. Um, so I think as we kind of work through these issues, it'll become more clear where these are appropriate and where they're not. So I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. Ms. Lawrence?
Yeah, just a couple of comments to make things straight. These, uh, cannabis operations in the state of Mississippi is legal in the state of Mississippi. The DEA, United States, does not recognize that. So you can't bear pharmacy fill these prescriptions because it's not legal in the United States. So you have to go to these dispensaries to have this done. So saying you're talking about being in front of a pharmacy, not a pharmacy, there's two different worlds. You gotta get your information straight. Pharmacist legalized in the United States cannot fill these prescriptions because they're not recognized as being legal in the United States. DEA controls that. That's the United States. So to make the statement, you get the pharmacist, not, nothing to do with pharmacy. Get your story straight, make out the statement straight, whatever you want to put in. And there's a need for it, yes it is. Mackler's Generation, Parkinson's, cancer people, there's a great need for it. Always, just like anything else, the abuse. As far as there's no problems outside, Walgreens, you had to do. There are a lot of problems outside with ovaries and other things. They do have a lot of problems. And they create those. Look what they know. When they come out there, they have the extra pills to sell, stuff like that. Goes on constantly in these parking lots. Police tell you that. So what I just went with the deny because the Planning Commission denied it. We denied the one on the, the front beach, so I didn't, I didn't, to me, it's not appropriate for downtown Biloxi. Since we're trying to build downtown Biloxi back up, and I just don't think this is one of the things that we needed downtown Biloxi. And as far as that building, it's not been empty. It's been about four or five things. I've had more ribbon cutting in that building than building than Biloxi. There've been several different things. Do you know that, Jerry? So it's not had, not been empty. It's been several different things. And you just, they hadn't made it. Anyway, so I'm still gonna vote against it. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll make the final comments. Um, um, this is the area that I represent, um, the community of Ward Two. And of course you do your due diligence. Uh, generally, I, I look at what the Planning Commission and a lot of times I do not go against the Planning Commission in most cases. But in this case, um, I went down and talked to some of the residents, the people there that were in the area. Um, none of them that I spoke to, uh, during my time that, um, none of them were, was opposed to it. So I too will, will support, um, Dr. Tisdale's motion in this case. Okay, with that being said, I'm gonna call for the question. All in favor? Option C, that's four, one, two, three, four, and the deny, George. So it passes four, one. Motion carries. And it's approved. Okay, we're gonna move right along. Um, C, Michelle?
B.
Resolution.
B.
For B, resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize construction of a three-story, two-family residential dwelling within a neighborhood business zone to be identified as one ninety-seven First Street.
I need a motion on it?
Move of a discretion.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence?
Second.
Second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions, Ms. Lawrence?
Yeah, now we can talk. Where's Gerald? Now you can come up.
All right.
Yeah, this is the, the corner of, uh, Cedar and First Street.
Yes.
On the side way to church.
Directly behind it, north of the church.
And you, you said two stories. I thought it said three stories.
It's a three-story.
But the building is a, is a.
Down on the, on the floor. Parking on the first floor.
Right, the first one's parking.
Well, we're gonna, we, we will have parking underneath and, and it'll be elevated because of requirements of flood. But we'll have, we'll have three, uh, three floors above that. There'll be, uh, on the first floor is gonna be the, uh, the, uh, you know, the kitchen and then there'll be a bedroom. And on second floor is gonna be, uh, uh, a, a living area. Uh, and along with, he's gonna have a, like a business office that you might see like in a hotel or something like that, just to, uh, and on the third floor will also be, uh, bedrooms.
Okay, and, uh, how many that you actually put in there? It's not a very big piece of property, so.
No, it's just, it's, it's a duplex. It's two units.
Three units.
And, uh, yeah, we meet all our setback requirements and, uh, we'll have, uh, adequate space for parking. Uh, we'll, we'll enter off of First Street with four parking places and then we're gonna have two parking places under the building off of Cedar Street. And, uh, and it's, this is, uh, it, it's a, it's gonna be an upscale development. It's, uh, he's not looking for, uh, you know, your normal apartment rates. He's looking for, uh, rates of, of anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars a day. So, uh, he's, it's, it's gonna be a real upscale project. And, uh, he's, uh, if, he feels very comfortable with the, uh, the opportunity to find the property he has and he's probably, he's probably gonna, he's got, right now, I think he's got the, uh, uh, Seacool, old Seacool Restaurant property under contract as well across the street to do this, a similar development. And, uh, he feels very comfortable with it and, uh, he's, he, he's got the financial ability to do it and, uh, it'll be done just as, you know, he's, uh, he's planning to start plans right after the first.
The road that goes, the road that goes behind St. Michael's and they have a retaining wall. Is the weight of this thing gonna affect that retaining wall?
The, the loads will actually be on piers. They'll be primarily on the, uh, internal part of the, uh, the, the building and it shouldn't affect anything, uh, beyond probably two feet of the property. Uh, you know, the, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, buildable property. We still got a ten-foot setback. So it'll be, it'll be, the first footing will, will be somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve foot off of the property line. So we shouldn't have any problem with that. And, and we, we're not gonna drive piling, so there's not gonna be any shaking of the earth or anything like that.
And I thought that, uh, the pastor at the church, and they said they really had no opposition to them doing that on that piece of property because it's pretty much connected with the church property.
Yes, yeah, yeah, it is. It is and, uh, he, you know, it, it's, it's a development that, uh, he, he's really excited about. As a matter of fact, he's, he's, uh, gonna buy a, uh, one of those, I don't know, like twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand dollar golf carts with, uh, G, GPS on there so that they can drive internally but just can't get on the highway. And, and, uh, and his, his tenants will be able to use that to drive around to the restaurants, to the palace, to the Harris or whatever. So, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a nice development.
And this is one of the things when they first started with the short-term rentals. They were supposed to be building a new property like this one. It's supposed to be across the street from like the hotels and the, the casinos. This one's here straight across the street from Margaritaville. It's gotta go, go the nugget right down there. And they all gonna be shopping. This is probably one of the things they actually did the right way to get this done.
Yeah.
But also I, I agree with Ms. Wilson. We have to look at a number on where you're gonna stop this. There's no way you can just do five thousand, you know, or some crazy number.
Yeah.
Because all it's gonna do is ruin a lot of these pieces of property with them people, these houses. It's just, it's gonna change. This here is a different, this is a brand-new built-in short-term rental.
Yeah.
And that was one of the things, right?
I'm in accordance with your thoughts here and this has been on the drawing boards for a couple of years.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm in full support of this because it is the first. There'll be others, especially in near vicinity. When you talked about, there's actually, uh, you know, grocery store, hardware store and there's a, a natural next path, next, uh, set of, uh, things to develop on that, in that area.
Across the street with Patala's Hallway and then Rushee has a grocery store.
Rushee, Rushee and Patala, this was, this was the, this was the warehouse. Patala's Warehouse is where the property was.
This was the warehouse, right, exactly. And he's, like I said, he's looking at Rushee's property that was across the street, uh, uh, and, and a few others down that line and he, he feels like that with that, there's probably a potential to maybe do some commercial with that as well. So.
Okay, Dr. Tisdale, you second it?
Yeah, Mr. Creel, a, a head nod will be fine. That entire block is residential, I think, except for St. Michael's Church or at least the western half of that block is. I was looking at the zoning map the other day and my point is the reason this is before us today for a conditional use is because this particular corner is zoned neighborhood business. Exactly. So, thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Newman? Mr. Demme? You like it? Okay, Mr. Glavin? None? Mr. Barrett? Oh, okay, okay. And, and I have no opposite. I'm gonna go ahead and call for the question. All in favor? Okay, seven, zero, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Resolution C, Michelle?
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a proposed duplex to be utilized as a, as two short-term rental units for property presently situated within the neighborhood business zone and identified as one ninety-seven First Street.
I move to approve.
Moved by, moved by George. That's two, George. Second by Dr., second by Dr. Tisdale. Uh, any, any questions, George?
No, it's just assisted to the other proposal.
Okay.
Same piece of property.
Absolutely. Dr. Tisdale?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay, it, Mr. Barrett?
My game.
Mr. Nathan, your, your mic's not on for some reason.
It's on, it's just not working.
Okay.
Um, we've revisited, revisited this short-term rental thing multiple times and I think that we can do a better job on the regulatory side of things. Um, and, um, you know, such as the, um, on the application, um, having, having those numbers and stuff on there. And, um, you know, and that's just one of the suggestions, but I do agree. And I've gotten, and I brought this up several weeks ago, that I hadn't gotten several calls about, you know, um, units that were being rented out that weren't registered with the city. So on that side of things, I think we can do a better job, but I think this particular project's a good one.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Call for the question. All in favor? Seven, zero, motion carries. Resolution D? Michelle?
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize the construction of a forty-town home unit for property presental, presently situated within a community business zone and identified as sixteen fifty-four Beach Boulevard.
I move for discretion.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Ms., Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, Jerry? I've read through all this stuff in here and I've yet to figure out what you're doing with the conditional use. What is a conditional use if it's not for baristas, not for short-term rentals? So what is it for?
The conditional use is for townhomes. Townhomes in CB zoning is a conditional use under the ordinance. So that's what's being brought forward for them to be able to build townhomes there.
Yeah, but I know they talked about doing other things. I mean, they're gonna actually build townhomes and units in three and four. It'll be separated by the firewall.
Hmm, that's correct.
All right. And the fire department's okay with the in and out off the Highway ninety because that's, that's, that, you're talking about getting a big fire truck. Can they get in there and turn around? I mean, this is really, I also thought the townhouse had to be built on the street. This, this is a driveway. This is not a street.
No, they, they can be built as lo, against a driveway that has access to a street. But, uh, the question about the fire department, yes, this went through DRC and it does have one way in, one way out. They have a T turnaround at the end. But, uh, but where this complies with the fire code is that they've agreed to sprinkler all the buildings. They're gonna have fire sprinkler systems. So fire department satisfied.
So they built them like a motel.
Okay.
In a sense. I just hardly believe that somebody would build these three, four and ten-dollar townhouses in one or short-term rental. You know, you were talking about Gerald, talking about high end a while ago. That's pretty high end. But I mean, just, you know, I really, everybody's not, don't have a problem with this. It's pretty much gated inside of itself. It doesn't affect anything other than Highway ninety.
That's correct.
But that was the biggest problem. Most of the concern was traffic. Eighty-something cars coming in and out of there with the emergency vehicles, the, the utility people. And that's all been, no problem getting in and out of it. So.
Is this for short-term rental?
They're gonna use them for short-term rental, which is a use allowed by right in CB zoning.
Right. As I said, I was couldn't believe why you was even asking for that.
And this is a property that's right next to the Jubilee Hotel. So it's, there'll be the Holiday Inn Express and then the Jubilee and then this.
It wasn't noted on the resolution. Okay, it wasn't noted on the resolution, I'm sorry, Councilman, it wasn't noted on the resolution, go ahead.
I said it's just in front of Oak Shores, but we dealt with that apartment complex. This is, that road right runs on top of that and they kind of sit in front of that. This piece of property.
They will not be using the road, that, the driveway that goes back to the apartments. They won't be using that, they'll have their own road in and out. Actually, the curb cut already exists there.
Okay, and here we go again, if this actually turns in, it's hard to believe they can do forty short-term rentals in there. I don't know, but so we had them forty to the, the system we all talked about. Here we go again, we got two here, four, that's forty-two we had today. It's just hard for me to believe that they'll have that listed as short-term rental. You could actually sell them or people move into them. It's a pretty nice neighborhood right there, you know? I don't just kind of, don't have really a problem because most of the neighbors around there actually glad to see something like that being built instead of a cheap gas station or something like that, you know?
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale.
Yes, I, Mr. Lawrence shares some of, some of my thoughts, um, but, but in, along with this and the short-term rentals, um, a, a number of times before this council in dealing with short-term rentals, I've tried different approaches, uh, to limit particularly in residential neighborhoods, if not prohibit entirely, as they are prohibited, um, in city ordinances. So, uh, I, I'm taking the opportunity to comment that I think it would be great if we looked at some sort of cap on that as Mr. Lawrence has mentioned, Mr. Barrett has mentioned. Uh, but bear in mind, as we go forward, as we approve these, uh, they're not permitted until they have, uh, gotten a certificate of occupancy. Would that be correct?
That's correct, and, and after the fire department, the building department have inspected them.
Inspected them, which they do annually.
Yes, sir.
And there are a number of units going up currently on the, the west side of Briarfield.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Avenue, so they've, they've not come online yet, no certificate of occupancy. So that's what, forty-eight units there and this is gonna be another forty units. We're already at three hundred and seventy, this is gonna put us at four hundred and seventy. So if we're looking at capping, uh, if you will, the number of short-term rentals permitted in the city, then we're already up to around five hundred, uh, just to take all those into account. But anyway, I, I, I support Mr. Lawrence's reasoning on this, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale, Mr. Glavin?
Nothing.
Mr. Barrett?
So, I guess my question is this, because this is used by right, once we approve, um, or deny this, um, i- if it's approved, they can just go fill out an application and start using it as short-term rentals once it's built, correct?
Once they get their certificate of occupancy.
Okay, so that's.
We've conducted our inspections, yes, sir.
Okay, I was just, I, I was confused because I kept hearing people say it was for short-term rental and then I'd look at the agenda and I didn't see it anywhere, so it, it confused me. And I just overlooked the fact that it was in CB, um, uh, or NB. And so I guess that's the, um, the reason I overlooked that. Mr. Lawrence, um, whatever, I, I, I do have some concerns about the number that we have in the city. Um, and, and the reason I have that concern is because if you have a bunch of units that are sitting empty, we don't know what's gonna end up happening with them long-term, you know? If, if, if people aren't able to support their investment, um, you know, we may end up with something that we don't want. And so that does cause me concern, but whatever your, um, whatever your vote is, I, I'll support you on this today.
I've got one last question for Jerry.
Okay, uh, let me go with Mr. Deming first. Mr. Deming, you have any comments?
I think he's supporting it. It's just too much, it's almost like a setup, like, every, everyone's made comments and it, it baffles me, um, after the majority of the comments that have been made on this council by members of this council in the past. Now, what happens when you have in, um, when you, when you have an, a large inventory of something that's not wanted, it converts, right? Homeowners wouldn't keep their homes in the inventory of a, of a short-term rental if it wasn't generating any money. They'd make it a long-term rental or they'd sell the property. Yeah, my concern with what we may end up with, and I'm not taking a shot at you, I'm just saying that, that what we may end up with may not be something we want, it's not our property, it's their property. And if, if we look at limiting and monopolizing, uh, the industry of short-term rentals and granting certain people the privileged right to do it, but exclude any future or, or competing business, I think we are violating our, our, our oath and our responsibility to the rest of the community. I, I don't think that's the right way to go. I think the marketplace will handle itself. If we get a surplus of those units, it will become something that will be more profitable in some other facet. Um, these two units, I think they're well, or, almost everything that's been put on this agenda today has been well thought out by the property owners, um, the proposed developments. I, I can't imagine why this council wouldn't support the majority, if not all of these, these, uh, resolutions. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Newman? Ditto, okay, Dr. Tisdale, I know you had another comment.
Yeah, Jerry, this is located, um, ba-, uh, on the, just the east of, uh, White Pillars.
Just east of the Jubilee, the Jubilee is the last bit, the hotel is the last one.
Correct, I didn't know the name, name of it, but.
There's a sign on this property that says Oak Shores, but it's actually advertising the apartments that are on the north.
And I couldn't remember the, the name of that development, but it was Oak Shores. Originally, that was apartments or condos?
It was apartments, yes, sir.
It was apartments, and as I recall, I may not recall correctly, I've had a birthday since this, we passed something. But, uh, I, I think all of those were rezoned for short-term rentals?
Yes.
Yes, so, and I don't know how many units there are back there, but, but there's a lot of them.
Yes, sir, there are.
And that was the first, um, location, I guess, where folks got together and said, hey, this is what we wanna do. And that's, but that was a chunk of short-term rentals right there.
That's correct.
Uh, and there are others in the Seabreeze and some other properties. Uh, but I just wanted to be sure because that this development is gonna go just south of that. It will front, will be there right there in front of.
That's correct.
Whatever we're talking about.
Oak Shores, yes, sir.
Oak Shores, see, I'm, I'm fading fast, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale, uh, Mr. Lawrence, you had another comment, I think.
Yeah, just real quick, uh, it's the White Pillars, Holiday Inn Express, Jubilee, then Oak Shores, and then this product here. That, what you do, you, what, next we're talking about, we had, he's talking about ninety units right now. We passing forty-eight, two, and forty, that's ninety units, so you went from three seventy to four sixty. So, yeah, you can say what you want, there's a certain time when you should come out with a bunch of empty pieces of property after they built or they're not gonna bill them, you know? So that's, that's, there is something that you can do, and yet the city has the right to do that, to protect itself and make sure that these things are done right and they taken care of and not just run up and being empty and doing anything else. So, yeah, that's something you need to look at. Last question, is this considered commercial property or residential property?
No, it's commercial, CB is community business.
I know, but I'm just saying, so all the townhouses is gonna be listed under commercial property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I got the final comments, um, I'm, I'm kind of in line with, uh, Mr. Deming. Let the market dictate itself. Okay, ready, I'm gonna call for the question, all in favor? That's everybody, you in favor? Okay, seven, zero, motion carries. Okay, we got one more? Number E, Ms. Michelle?
Resolution to grant final subdivision plot approval for Yula Cove Town Home Subdivision, Phrase Two, a twelve-lot, single-family residential subdivision for property presently identified as an unaddressed parcel of land situated south of Yula Cove.
Can I need a motion?
Yula Street, sorry.
So moved.
Dr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Glavin, Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, they're moving along, this is part of the process. I go out there and look periodically, post a few pictures, um, I'm good with it, I.
These are, these are not for short-term rental, so they're long-term rental.
What?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, then, then why is it on this agenda? I'm good with, I'm good with that, thank, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale, Mr. Glavin?
I have no further comment.
Okay, anyone else?
I have one question, Paul, I thought there was only one Yula Street, I was on the point, I didn't realize there was another one. Yula's the one right sit there about, uh, the whole folks home, that's Yula.
I, I don't name this.
Yeah, on the point.
What, what this is, is it, uh, it's all part of the same development? Yes, they're building the townhomes now, the thirty-eight along Yula and they acquired the property just south of that, so they're actually just adding this into the name of.
Correct, they're, they're on both sides of Yula Street. I think Mr. Lawrence said there's another Yula Street.
On the point, yeah.
Okay.
And East Biloxi.
That's a one-way street right there, that's the last street, uh, so what?
The mayor, the mayor's saying, but nobody's listening to him, like we usually do.
That's true, that's what we, we know better than that.
Off of Maple Street is what?
That's correct.
Chula.
Chula.
Chula, okay.
Not, not Yula.
T. Okay.
All right, so in any case, there's always a history lesson here at these council meetings, thank you.
It's great they had a fire department with us to straighten us out.
Had to look it up on the phone.
Okay, any, any other questions before I call for a question? Okay, all in favor? Seven, zero, motion carries. I need a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Glavin, second by Dr. Tisdale, Mr. Glavin?
I have no comment.
No comment, Dr. Tisdale?
Um, yes, on item Z, which is the, the Tullis development, there are five parcels there. How many acres does that total?
Eight plus?
Eight point nine, thank you, and, um. And I was trying to get some history on this and I, I believe the city bought this in about two thousand or two thousand and one and I, I assume they bought all five parcels. I think for, wanna say it was three point two million, but I'm, I'm, I'm not that familiar with the history, but was looking on the city's website and found something and it was under the Holloway administration at that time, but.
With all candor, I'm not certain what the city paid, portions of the property it's had for a much longer period of time. Uh, it was, a portion of it was donated by the Tullis family. I think that deed dates back into the, possibly the nineteen seventies. Um, uh, there were, my recollection is some land swaps that may have also occurred on bits and pieces of property, but we don't have the specifics of what the city might have paid, Dr. Tisdale.
I'm thinking we may have a witness at the end of the table here who was at the scene of the crime, so to speak, years ago, that might enlighten us, Mr. Lawrence?
Right, it was, uh, three point five million. It's all due with, uh, old keep and the rest of the Tullis. And it was actually bought to make the three-hundred-year anniversary of building and everything designed for that. But, uh, back then, for three-hundred years, so it was like in two thousand and one, two thousand and two when they did that. But that was the original purchase price. The problem was about a year before that was on the mark for three hundred and thirty thousand and they wound up till a year later paying three point five million for it. But there was the reason they did that, bought that old piece of property. They had, uh, slave quarters on it, they had a lot of different houses which they took down that ran towards Holloway Avenue. But that's, uh, pretty much the history, what else you wanna know about it, Paul? Hey, one, let me tell you something else, this happened.
Did you ever go swimming in that swimming pool there?
Yeah, there, that was, uh, yeah, they did, that was underground. When they tried to move the Seacool Museum there, they said it was an Indian burial ground. And if they went after it and found anybody's bones or anything, they couldn't be able to build anything on it. Well, with the mistake they made was the Tullis and everybody that lived there, the Hendersons and them buried the bodies behind the house, which everybody did back in them days. So, yeah, they were gonna find a lot of bones, but I mean, it was, it was nothing to do with Indians. Cause you remember Mr. Budrow, I asked first on that, he said Indians don't bury anybody in a gutter. That used to be a water right going to Duquesne and they feels like they didn't have to Camille. So Indians get higher to the spirit, they don't get lower, so that was all missed anyway. Anything else?
Uh, not from you, George.
Yeah.
Okay, taking that, taking that real quick.
I think we got our own, we got the council historian.
We, we, uh, and this is a, a substitute resolution for what was originally, I guess, what we received originally and the cost of the property was to be determined by two, two appraisals, uh, within that, whatever that average was, at another twenty-five percent. And in, in the first document we, we received, there was a floor price, if you will, of two and a half million dollars. But that's been removed in this resolu?
No, sir, it has not been removed.
Two point two million?
Two point two five.
Two point two five million?
Correct, and that, that floor is still present. The, there's nothing that changed with the option agreement.
Okay.
My understanding is the resolution was simply substituted because it had a line or two that was incorrect. Um, I think it was a carryover from a prior draft of a resolution. The option has not changed at all. So it will be two appraisals ordered by the city, the average of the two appraisals plus twenty-five percent. So you are assured that you will get twenty-five percent in excess of the average of the appraisals with a floor as well. So regardless of the appraised value, you couldn't go below the floor.
Exactly, and so from what you said earlier, the only reason for the substitution was basically a cut-and-paste error? It sounds like it.
That's correct, again, to, to my knowledge, they're.
I got, it referenced, uh, to build a convention center, which was on the previous, the previous time we opted it.
Gotcha, okay.
So we took out, we took the convention center language out.
Okay, good deal, thank you, Mr. Schwartz, thank you, Mr. Abay. That concludes my comments, thank you.
Oh, thank you, okay, Mr. Barrett?
Uh, the only thing I have is S and BB, they go together, is that correct, Mike?
S and BB.
S and BB, Shriners, um, project.
Yeah, both of them, Overstreet, yeah.
It's, one of them is, one of them is basically, um, giving professional services to, I think S was to Overstreet and Associates? And then the other was, um, amending the budget, okay, but it's the same project, right, the extension? Okay, the other, only other question I have, which it's not on here, you had said that there was gonna be, it was gonna be on the agenda for, um, the, I guess, Shorecrest, Boyett, um, design? Do you know when that, when that?
We, we just got the proposed contract.
Okay, so next agenda or two, okay, all right, that's all I have.
Okay, uh, Mr. Glavin, did I, I get you already?
You got me.
Okay, Mr. Deming? Okay, Ms. Newman? And George, I got you already? All right, then, and I'm clear.
Question.
You got an extra question?
Yeah, this is, uh.
Okay, come on with it.
This is for Mike. When you're doing it, the Shulon thing, this is money, I mean, it's great that you went after this kind of money to help build us up. You know, did you get it from where? The Gomez or something else?
The, the original project was a Gomez grant for eight hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
We've, we've been working on that for over a year. We're at ninety percent design, waiting for some permitting issues and we're, then we'd be ready to start. This, the NIFWIC project, National Fish and Wildlife Federation, that project is, we've just received, we, it, it's estimated to cost eight hundred thousand. We, we just received a s-, a grant, we're the sub-grantee actually to MDEQ, to do the design and permitting. So these two projects are adjacent to each other, if you will, in that small area. And between, between them, we'll have somewhere like a, a million six to really make that area nice.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that was pretty good that you went after, I got that kind of money for that.
This is, this is an area where you've, you've heard the mayor talk about, we used a soft shell there and there was a nice little beach.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good effort for salt shell and.
We'll end up with a, the amenities, a little picnic area and, uh, a, a pier, a pier that goes out, uh, for fishing and, and a bulkhead around the little area, so, um, we just got lucky that, uh, they came looking for another project. So we were able to squeeze the, the two to, together there.
And that's, it's a good job there. Sometimes you gotta rethink, you know, Mike, when you do a good job.
It's better to be lucky than good.
Well, hey, we'll take both of them.
All right, anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah.
Now you don't need any more history lessons.
Okay, and, and I have nothing else, um, okay, call for the question, all in favor of the consent agenda? Okay, seven, zero, any objections on any, George?
None.
None, Ms. Newman? Mr. Deming? Dr. Tisdale?
Nothing.
Barrett? Glavin? We're all good, okay, great, routine agenda?
I move it.
Routine, moved by the. Move by Mr. Lawrence?
Second.
Second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions?
Yeah, Walt, we received good money last year, last week, a million six, how about any more money this week? You said you had another meeting?
Yeah, Walt.
Outside voice. So, yes, Councilman, as I reported at our last council meeting, we would have some money coming in, and we did receive the 1.64 million last Tuesday. We have another 1.39 million processing, and we should have that by the end of this month.
All right, there you go. Appreciate the update.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else on the routine? Call for a question, all in favor? Seven zero, motion carries. And I guess it's a motion to...
Some move.
No, not recess on this one.